23rd, 2025. If you could rise for a moment of silence and pledge with Mr. Coburn.
Good evening. On Friday, September 12th, Jamie Nickerson, dedicated employee of the town of Enfield, Department of Public Works for over 18 years, and a parent of one of our very own EPS students tragically passed away while performing his job duties. While I did not know Jamie personally, those that did described him as a perfect, caring, and attentive husband and father who loved his family immensely and always put them first. He was commended for the pride he took in his work. His service helped maintain the safety, cleanliness, and beauty of our town. We mourn the loss of Jamie and the profound impact it has on our community. If you would, please join me in a moment of silence. And now if you'll join me in our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. In the unlikely event of a fire, you can exit out the rear door of the chambers and out to the parking lot, or you can exit out the side doors of the chambers, your first left down the stairs, and out to the parking lot. Leslie, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Coburn?
Here.
Mrs. Akri?
Here.
Dr. Callen?
Here.
Mrs. Cushman?
Here.
Mr. Gauss?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. Pickett?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Chairwoman Riley?
Here.
Okay.
Chairwoman Riley, may I make a motion?
Yes, sir.
Just some housekeeping. I'd like to make a motion to move item 11A up to 6B, which will follow our board guest.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion to move item A, 11A, up to 6B.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pickett. Any discussion? Mr. Coburn?
Just a quick comment, just something to be cognizant of. It would bypass public communication. So if there was anybody that wanted to speak on it, we would potentially act on it before that.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? All right. Show of hands in favor. So, Ms. Cushman, she's in favor. Okay, so that's eight in favor. Against, abstention. None against and one abstention. Okay.
Madam Chair, I have one more item.
Okay.
I'd like to add a new item of business. This would be 11B.
Okay.
I'd like to add an item to approve the student representatives and alternates for this school year to be our board liaisons.
Okay, so we want to add an 11B to appoint 2025, 26 student reps and alternates.
Second.
Please.
Okay. A motion made by Mr. Ryder, second by Ms. Pickett. Any discussion? Okay, no discussion. Show of-
I'm just going to quickly say something. I appreciated that comment, Phil, in our last discussion. And I would just note, there's, besides Ms. Middleton, there's only one person physically here, but I would love feedback. Thank you.
Okay. All right, and then show of hands in favor. Okay, nine in favor, none against. Okay, thank you, Mr. Ryder.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, so, Mrs. Middleton, you are our board guest doing three things this evening.
So while she's getting set up, we have the three things this evening. As we were going through and we were designing or coming up with the different board guests, these three items absolutely are interconnected. So we, I think it was Ms. Middleton who said, why not let's do them all together? Because they are just interwoven perfectly. So she's going to take you through the Portrait of the Learner, just a quick little update because we've taken you through the Vision of a Graduate, which we've now shifted the name, basically. And then we have the first district, well, our first district improvement plan, which is going to flow directly into the Alliance Grant Funding Plan, which just to note, you already know all about because we did it as part of the 25, 26 budget. So while it looks like it's going to be a whole lot, Ms. Middleton has assured us that it will not be.
Okay, hold on, before you start. Ms. Cushman, can you see the presentation? On your-
So far, I'm only seeing you.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if it's going to shift to the slide.
All right. It might. We'll see what we could do behind the scenes.
Yeah.
Go for it.
Thank you. I don't know how to do that. Okay. First thing we're going to talk about is a quick refresher of Portrait of a Learner, which was our Vision of a Graduate. So this is the first slide that was an activity that all staff did during one of the August PLs with their buildings. And it just explains the name change. And as we talked about last year a little bit in May, you know, we began with the title of Vision of a Graduate, but discussions among staff and feedback we got from stakeholders, it really didn't represent the whole, it didn't highlight the entire spectrum of the student learning pre-K through 12. And we don't want it to seem like once they graduate, they're done with these things, they're going to take them into the world with them. So we kind of decided to switch it to Portrait of a Learner. So it's the same information, like the CLIME acronym that we came up with Vision of a Graduate, everything's the same, just the name changed. So the first thing that happened with staff is they were, their building administrator talked to them about the name change and why we did it. And so just to remind everybody, our broad or big picture skills are, go along with the acronym CLIME. We have collaboration and communication. We have lifelong learning and literacy, innovation and problem solving, mindset for success, and building character and community. And then we also actually, last spring, we looked at the descriptions of the broad skills. They're like ICANN statements to help students understand what it looks like when they're mastering these, when they have the, when they're doing these skills, exhibiting them, this is what it looks like. So part of the activity that all staff engaged in in August, and Adco did it the week before staff came back, was they looked at the descriptors for broad skills and they got into groups and they worked on one letter at a time. And they broke down what it looks like when kids, how do they know kids are exhibiting these? What does that look like? And what are the teachers doing during this time? So then all of that information was brought back, and it was synthesized, and some, some subskills were identified for each of these categories, right? And last week in Adco, the administrators looked at and gave feedback on the subskills. So what'll happen next is teachers will do the same thing sometime later this month. And then JFK and Enfield High plan to start introducing their students to the entirety of Vision of a Graduate, and asking them survey questions like, what does this look like in your learning? What types of assessments? How would you think that you were learning these broad skills? How do you think we should roll out the vision? Those types of questions. And the other thing I want to highlight is that the directors have started their 612 departmental meetings, or professional learnings, with looking at unit one of each of the curriculum documents through the lens of Portrait of a Learner. And what do we have in place already? What needs to be enhanced? What needs to be added? So that work is already starting to kind of audit our curriculum documents and see where we are strong and where we need to enhance some other things. And Adco will be continuing to work on the development. We're going to also start looking now at those subskills in different levels. What does it look like pre-K2? What does it look like 3.5, 6.8, and 9.12? So that's the work that we're going to continue through this year. Next is the district improvement plan. So we have three areas of focus for this. Systems and structures, teaching and learning, and climate and culture. So those are the three areas of focus that we're working, doing all of our work in this year. And for each of those, we wrote, we came up with a theory of action. So for systems and structures, we feel that if systems and processes are aligned with and consistent across the district, then students and staff will have positive equitable experiences. For teaching and learning, we feel that if we provide ongoing, high-quality professional learning, focused on evidence-based instructional practices and data-driven decision-making, then student engagement will increase resulting in improved academic outcomes. And then for culture and climate, we feel that if we foster the development of social, emotional, and intellectual habits, then students and staff will feel more connected to the school community resulting in improved climate and morale. So those are the three theories of action we went into this with. And now, each system, I mean each area has two goals. And the focus, these are not the actual goals. They're just a synthesis of the focus areas for each goal. So under systems and structures, we're working on onboarding, retention, and mentoring practices, an HR-type goal. And then we're also, the other goal is the multi-tiered system of supports and data tracking, getting everything aligned and consistent across the districts. That's a system of the work. Under teaching and learning, we have a professional learning goal. And then we also have instructional intervention practices. That's kind of that, the one B is the systems and process of multi-tiered, of MTSS. But two B is the action of it. And then for culture and climate, we have trauma and for restorative practices is one of our goals, and then staff morale, morale and social, emotional well-being. So those, that's kind of where we're putting our focus. Okay. Next, this all goes into the Alliance Plan. The Alliance Plan actually supports each area of the district improvement plan. So the Alliance Plan comes with four possible priority areas that a district can focus, oops, sorry. Talent, academics, climate, and operations. Our plan actually has at least one goal for each of the four priority areas. And you're not allowed more than three goals per priority area. And our Alliance Award, as a reminder, was $1,443,501. So, for talent, our priority focus area is going to be on recruitment. And we're going to use the money to purchase materials and communications to highlight the benefits and opportunities of working at the public schools. We'll use those at job fairs. We're basically, it's marketing and advertisement for coming to work for us, the positive aspects of our district. And advertising all of our open, the open postings when we get them as soon as possible. Academics. Academics actually has three goals. Oh, that, it says 2.1 because it's the second area of focus of the first goal. Sorry, I wanted to explain that earlier. Increase staff for intervention. So the middle school intervention, teachers, math intervention are in this, as are the sixth elementary academic tutors. Because the, we're putting their, their efforts into supporting students in intervention and increasing the support staff we have in that area. The second priority, priority area of focus is not a surprise for any of us. It's increased staff for special population support. Our TESOL teacher landed in there. So we have three social workers, a special education teacher at one of the elementary schools, one of the, one integrated preschool teacher, speech and language pathologist assistant, and two behavior technicians. All of those people are working in our special education classrooms or more likely our specialized programs that we have in our schools to support the needs of those students. And also obviously the TESOL teachers working with our multilingual learners. And the last priority focus is common core aligned curriculum. And this is where our summer curriculum writing came in. And some of the projects that we worked on this summer included, sorry, I'm not keeping up with myself, included Algebra II, the math intervention at JFK, actually K through 8. They all got together and came up with lessons and structures of how those classes would work. They kind of realigned all of that for this year. TESOL did some writing, the grade six music. I think you all remember that we readjusted all the music at JFK to, to align with the fact that the grade five band orchestra chorus and lessons weren't there. So they, grade six rewrote that to accommodate for those students and to start with baseline where they could help develop them. And K5 computer and STEAM, we did some rewriting there because we used to have two separate classes. And then the STEAM kind of went away and we had just computer ed last year. But we've brought those classes together to take the, the most important standards from each of them and combine them so students aren't missing anything. Priority three is, three one is student engagement morale. And this is where we put all of the class size teachers. So we have elementary classrooms, two of them for grade five, a grade two, a grade four, and the grade six science. Because we felt that the size of the classes was impacting attendance and morale in the classrooms and making instruction a little more difficult. So we felt it fit in with the school climate aspect of it. Operations, we have two. We have an extended learning time, and those are our late buses at JFK and Field High, providing students opportunities to stay after for extra help or join clubs and participate in different activities. And technology and, technology integration to expand opportunities. EduClimber software kind of fits into this because it's going to help us tremendously with our interventions, especially in attendance and behavioral. But it also does help us track, look at data from assessments in many different ways. And I think it's going to be very helpful for the teachers and the principals. And then technology for specialized courses. We need to update some technology to continue with some of the specialized courses that we have, depending on the software. That's actually all I have.
Okay. So does anybody have any questions, comments? Mr. Coburn?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess I'll start it off and I'll, I guess I'm, you know, focused between the district improvement plan and the Alliance Grant Funding Plan. So starting with the improvement plan, I guess, how did that come to development? Like, did we, through the superintendent, like, did we survey staff and like building administrators? Was there focus groups? Like, did we kind of list out like strategic weaknesses in the district? And like, hey, this is what we need to improve on? Or was it more like, let's kind of source some ideas and start branching off from there? So I guess, could you speak a little to that process?
Sure. Do you want me to speak to it or do you want to?
I could start because we have discussed this prior. As I mentioned before, a couple of different times, especially last year, a lot of this was based off of the feedback that I received from all of the different staff. As you remember, when, about a year ago, I started meeting with every single staff across the district as well as kids. So all of that information was brought together and coalesced into sort of the larger areas. That's what those large, those first focus areas that were, became clearly evident that we had to deal with systems and structures. Clearly in education, you should always be dealing with teaching and learning. And coming in the stem, off the, off the heels of, you know, the prior issues that had occurred, culture and climate was obviously going to be a big piece of that. So those were the main focus areas that came about. And then within those conversations, very specific, nobody held back, I'll just put it that way. Very specific suggestions were made. And then all of that was brought to first cabinet, where we discussed it, and then to the administrative council.
Okay, thank you. So my other question then, and I had kind of, between the last few days, I was kind of looking at like sample Alliance Grants from, from other towns. And kind of moving on to the, like, the funding plan, kind of like the talent, the academics, and the operations, all seem kind of consistent as, as part of like the requirements, what the state wants. I guess one of my questions, and maybe this is more for clarity, because obviously the first one is being talent, talks about like recruitment and selection. And I noticed in our second one for academics, like the first two goals talk about staffing, like increased staff. Are those, are we sure that's supporting the focus area of academics? Or, I mean, because I could make an argument that that focus is also on talent. Does that make sense?
It does. But when you read, because I've delved through them as well, and what the state, and the actual grant and the suggestions they give. And the academic piece, the staffing does fit in there because the focus of those staff is to improve academic opportunities for some of our students. And the, this grant, others might write it differently, but we focused on where we felt students needed the most support. So it is the intervention that we're trying to expand and get equitable across the grade levels. And also the special education, which we know we need the support there as well to help those students meet their goals and objectives that's still learning happening in those classrooms. So you need the teachers to do that. You need the social workers for the social, emotional. You need, so those people do fit in. And I have read other ones, and there's comparable. Some people put the talent in the first one. But the examples I've read from the state, it doesn't really match. They talk about recruitment. They talk about onboarding. They talk, that's what their focus is on, using the talent money for. You could do it either way. But I just felt the academic focus, because I wrote an academic goal for it.
Okay.
So the goal that, because you have to write goals for the state. So the goal is raising, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I think it's something with the smarter balanced growth and the DPI for ELA and math, depending on. And I think I, and one of them is focused on the students with disabilities as well, looking at their numbers.
And actually, that, yeah, and that kind of segues into like part two of my question then. Because with academics, I was, and from the examples I saw, and I just didn't see it here, and that's why I was going to ask. I noticed it seemed very metric-driven. And, you know, I understand there's obviously different measures of success, but, you know, predominantly when you got to put something on paper, it's easier to go by metrics because it's, it's objective and you can track it. And some of the other districts, yeah, they do talk about, you know, DPI, the District Performance Index. Yeah, it has to improve a certain number of points. And I just didn't see that in the presentation. So I just wanted to make sure we had that covered.
No, it's in, yeah, no, the, the grant, if you've read them online, you see that they're, they're pretty long and detailed.
Yeah.
So that is in there. The staffing is all, the money is all tied to, so I have 2.1, 2.2, 2.3. The money for 2.1 is in a category that says 2.1. It's not all just one big total. Everything is accounted for within their category.
Yeah, I think we're providing a very high-level synopsis of what the detailed grant actually includes. Because you have to provide the background. You have to provide your focus areas. You have to provide for how you're going to be monitoring the progress. And as part of this prod, as part of the Alliance Grant, which we haven't necessarily needed to go through because we never were receiving money before. But now that we're writing this grant application, we will be required to go through a beginning of the year, a middle of the year, and an end of the year, where they will actually, they provide you a tracker, if you will, for no other better way of saying it, where you have to submit your information and they see how you did.
Right.
So there's a, there's a lot of accountability when it comes to making sure that there's follow-through in terms of the progress that you're making with the different pieces that you've placed into the grant.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I think, Mr., okay, I think you kind of tied into what I was getting at. Because I noticed one of the themes too was like the SMART goals.
Yes.
And again, that ties into the DPI because it's hard numbers and you could track that. So I want to make sure.
We have them all.
Yeah, we have that. So I guess my last question then, before I'll give other people chances then. So what is our timeline from, you know, assuming, because we are taking action on this tonight, it goes through between now and when it gets submitted to the state? I mean, what does that process look like? What's that timeline look like?
It's due October 3rd. It is 99.9% written. I just have to edit a couple of things. And it has to be, it's actually already sitting in the e-grant management system.
Okay.
But some of the things have to be updated a little bit.
Okay, so like a draft is already created?
Yes, exactly, exactly. So I have to update a few things. You guys have to approve it. And then it goes in. So it, it's due October 3rd.
October 3rd, okay. So it has to be, the button that hits submit has to go to CSD.
Yes.
We submit it by October 3rd. The State Department then reviews it, sends back any edits or revisions that they may or may not suggest.
Yes.
After that point, it then goes on to another step, and then fiscal authority provides the assurances that you will be receiving the money.
Awesome.
You might get that in writing.
Like every other grant, we use through the e-grant management system. Yep. It's the exact same process that we follow with, with all of our grants.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Middleton. That's all I have right now.
Okay, Ms. LeBlanc.
Yes, I have a question about the academic tutors. Are they similar to the instructional coaches that we at one time had? Or is it going to be completely different?
They are not. They are, they are part-time tutors that work with small groups of students at the elementary level on either reading or math. And they're, they're overseen by, like, the language arts or the math consultants so that they know exactly what to work on. Sometimes the classroom teachers, because sometimes they'll be in the classroom teachers' room as well, depending on how it all works out, but for that building and what their, what their, you know, what their schedule looks like. But they work with small groups of students, providing instruction.
So, yeah, so you're going to be adding them. So we're gonna, I feel, I don't know how to word this. So the teachers are going to be tasked with implementing this. And we're going to eventually measure the, the goals and accountability. How accountable will the admin be? The teachers need support in the classrooms. What's admin's role in this?
Well, they all wrote school improvement plans that we've been going through. Every, every school improvement, every school improvement plan is based off the district improvement plan. It is perfectly aligned. They have strategies and goals that they are working on for their building. They are in charge of implementing those. That provides support, progress monitoring, all of that. We just sat through, I've sat through six out of nine schools so far. And not only are they aligned, but the K2 principals have worked together to discuss common strategies. There's a lot of talk about, both K2 and 3.5, because that's all I've, it's not pre-K today too, but. They've talked about professional development interschool, so grade levels across district can collaborate together. So they're working on strategies. That, that's what their job is. The implementation, we've, we have tutors already. So this is, that's not new.
Yeah, no, I'm not speaking to the tutors. I'm talking about the whole program.
Yeah.
Because I think that an admin team, Adco, can sit down and write all kinds of strategies and stuff. But what they're doing in their building is another story. And I think that you guys might want to look at accountability by building. Because, not by grade, not by, you know, cohort K through 2. I think that in order for this to be successful, there needs to be hands-on support with admin in the classrooms, with central office and admin, with central office in the classrooms. It can't just be like a hierarchy where the teachers are feeling like, oh, we're putting more work, we're getting more work, we're getting more work, we're getting more work. But there's no support to do that.
Well, okay, I hear what you're saying. I will say that they are not done in a, in a isolation. The principals don't write them by themselves. They usually have a team from their building working on it with them. And I know that at today's faculty meeting, at, at least five out of six, I'm assuming the one that was presenting tomorrow, did it as well. They shared their school improvement plan with their staff for feedback and they talked about it. And the reason they did that is so maybe some of the teacher evaluation goals can be aligned to the school improvement plan, which is aligned to the district improvement plan, which supports the profile of the learner.
Right.
So.
I think what you guys did is great. I'm just concerned about the implementation and the support.
I, yes, well, yes, I hear what you're saying.
And not, it, you know, the teachers are on the front line. Our class sizes are okay-ish. We still don't have all the supports we need for a district with 25% special ed kids and our free and reduced lunch numbers. So admin needs to be actively involved in the school buildings, whether it's a student in crisis, whether it's, because all those puzzle pieces come together for this to be successful.
Exactly.
So I guess those are just my out loud thoughts and concerns and implementation questions about how maybe an outsider might see this having to work, or my thoughts on it, or whatever. So kind of that's where I was going for that. I think that you're, I liked your acronym of CLIME. I think your systems and structures, your teaching and learning, and your culture and climate. I think that you and the team, whoever thought of it, took really thoughtful approaches to pain points in our district. And then as far as the Alliance Plan, I was a little bit surprised to see under operations, but I understand after you explained it, like, the additional.
You can, you can only have three.
Yeah.
Areas of focus under each, under each area, like three, three strategies, right? So once you get to 1.1, 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, you can't put everything under academics.
It's probably hard. It probably took a little bit hard to like separate those. And I just, we have the 1.4 million. And it blows my mind that Waterbury gets $76 million in Alliance funding, which is our budget in total. Imagine what we would do with an extra $76 million. So.
I could comment on some things.
No, I appreciate your presentation. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Ms. Pickett, I saw your hand.
Yes. So first, I want to say I was really excited to see that we had these three agenda items together, and it makes a lot of sense. So alignment, like intentional things, I'm excited, excited about that. And I like how they all go together. So thank you for that work. I do want to start with the Alliance Plan Grant, because I want to make sure I'm clear on this. This was all presented as, to us, as part of our budget. And then we presented a budget. And the town council decided that since there wasn't a surety of what was happening with Alliance funding in the legislature, they kind of held this hostage-ish to take some of what we had planned in our approved budget out and put into this grant. Am I recalling that correctly?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
So we, we, you, I shouldn't say we. The Board of Education approved the budget last year. 4.3223, I get the numbers sometimes back. But anyways, you approved the budget a little over 4% with the question mark regarding the Alliance funding and whether or not we would or would not be receiving it. We were reduced by the exact dollar amount of the Alliance funding, the 1.44 million dollars. We then took out of our, your approved budget, those items which Ms. Middleton- We then took out of our, your approved budget, those items which Ms. Middleton just described.
Perfect. So I can't help but feel like we're a little bit screwed, that we really should have gotten this as additional support. So these were planned supports, an Alliance Grant supposed to like support and provide addition to. So it's just frustrating to me that it was cut-ish out of our budget so that we had to put it into a grant when we approved a budget with the positions, these positions that we need in our budget already. So none of these positions are not something we had already approved and wanted. And typically, an Alliance Grant is additional supports that districts get to plan for, that, yes, we get to approve and say yes-ish to, but not even really. So I think it's clear, I think it's important that folks remember the process and understand that I'm going to be thankful for having Alliance funding and the hard work that you've put here. But I really wish that we could have had these supports as part of our operating budget and used 1.4 million for additional structures of support that we so badly need. So that's just one piece that I need to say out loud. The other piece around the goals and how we fund them in the Alliance Grant, I intimately understand this process. And I think everybody puts personnel as budget items under each area. It's a way to fund staffing. I do think we have to be honest about sustainability. The Alliance District has been looked at by the legislature as far as the success of it. They are definitely tied to goals by our data, because we're identified because of our data. So just want to clarify some of those pieces. So I am fully support of the Alliance Grant proposal that you put forth. I think it makes sense that it's aligned to our plan. I'm hoping that in years to come, those become operating staff that we have and we're actually able to use the grant in additional structures of support. I do want to go to the portrait of a learner. I was excited to hear about, like, really intentional ways that you brought that back with the back-to-school PD, the, like, conversation around curriculum alignment and how are we doing this and where does this show up? I think there's an opportunity with some of the climate and culture work and the behavioral work and possible consolidations of schools with prereqs, really thinking about what is the language of expectations. I think as a community, this could be something that could unite us as far as these are characteristics that I think everybody can sign on to. And I think we could all work on and be reflective of. How do we model these and demonstrate them? So I want to thank you for that work. And the district improvement plan, I was going to echo some of Tina's questions, Anne Phil's questions around process. I think that's really important, thinking about how our staff in particular were part of developing it. Thank you, Steve, for reminding us about the kind of feedback walkthrough visits. I'm also, I can tell by what you've created here, data also helps drive some of these. We need interventions and structures. So I, we've seen these informally through the way, when we think about your evaluation and such. We've been having these conversations. So these aren't a surprise, I don't think, to us, maybe presented in this kind of way. But we knew that you were working on this. So I appreciate this presentation. I think that all makes sense. And I'm excited for where the district can go.
Thanks, Amanda. Anybody else want to go? Mr. Gauss?
Hi. Most of it was pretty self-explanatory. But there was one thing that I didn't understand. I'm hoping you can define it for me, because.
I hope so, too.
I desperately am trying to remain as unknowledgeable about all of the inside lingo so that I can ask, so everybody can hear.
Absolutely.
What can you describe better for me, trauma-informed restorative practices?
You're going to get a tremendous update as part of the EPS update.
Okay.
From Mr. Longey.
All right, perfect then.
So he's going to take you through a lot of the restorative practices work that we've taken on.
Yep.
As part of this year, especially as a result of the school culture or school climate law that was passed recently.
Okay.
So we're going to give you a little bit of an update. I mean, you can do it now if you want, but then I'm not going to have anything for you to do in another minute.
It's a good question, though.
That's fine. I'm just, I'm just curious and I just want to make sure that anybody that wants to watch is a little bit more informed. Thank you.
Anybody else? Janet, are you good back there?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so just a couple of things. So tell me if I'm wrong in this assumption. The district improvement plan and Alliance Plan, kind of, they obviously go hand in hand. And to like Tina and Amanda's point, it rolls up and it rolls down.
Yes.
Because while the teachers are the front lines, the success of the school depends upon the administrators effectively assisting.
Correct.
The teachers. And then the district's success is reliant upon the cabinet and superintendent to make sure that the administrators have what they need to help the teachers.
Right.
Right? So everybody in some fashion is being held accountable for a part.
The words consistency and alignment have been in every single discussion I've had, I believe, since the middle of August with every single person I've talked to. So, I mean, it is, and it is very clear that that's where they are when you read their school improvement plans. Because they're obviously having discussions with each other about best practices. They're obviously talking about what they can make work. And they really are putting forward things that are aligning with what we have created as an administrative team, as a district improvement plan, which, again, as Mr. Macchio said, a lot of the, you know, when you look at the goals, the two goals under each, that came from feedback from teachers, too.
Right.
As to what they felt needed. They, like, so that, it wasn't like pulled out of thin air. It was pulled out of what everybody's saying, whether it be administrators or teachers or, or you all, stakeholders, whoever it may be. That's all purposeful.
Awesome.
So.
Okay, so then my other question is, and I don't know, I think I'm still in my lane here. When you submit the grant, can we, like, see what all of those metrics and stuff?
Yeah. Actually, everybody will be able to once it's approved, because it's online publicly, yeah. Absolutely.
Perfect. And then my, my last question is, with the district improvement plan.
Yes.
So like, it's in place.
Yes.
So what's kind of like the next steps? Where do we go from here? Like, are we, are we in, like, I'm measuring and data, like?
We're in an.
Now, or like?
Action plan type of situation for, for year one.
Okay.
So for each of these, there are action steps, there are strategies. There are people that are responsible for making sure that it's moving forward, that, that type of thing. So, and that will be posted as soon as that document gets.
When the document's completed, it'll be placed onto the district website. And then yearly.
Yep.
You'll be provided an update in terms of, here's the outcomes of how we've done. And then it will roll into, and here's what we're going to do next year. Because this was created to be areas of focus with subset goals that would take multiple years of work.
Right.
So we're committed to these theories of action for not just one year, not two years. Like, we work on these routinely, repetitively. And then we tweak the initiatives or the little pieces that we're doing to try to move forward with that as the district continues to progress forward.
And you'll see things in there. You won't see, like, an exact target to hit, but you'll see decrease in student incident, like, discipline incidents, increase in student academic performance, in a decrease in chronic absenteeism, things like that for this year.
Yep.
So then we have a, where we start.
Right.
Where we ended, you know?
Awesome. The amount of work that this took, thank you, is monumental. And this is like, it's like you have a clear vision. You know where we were and how we want to go and how we're going to get there. It's great.
Superintendent Macchio did an excellent job at convocation of outlining that for staff.
It was, it was.
For aligning how Portrait of a Learner goes directly into the district improvement plan, which is going to go directly into the student, the school improvement plan, which goes directly into the classrooms.
Yes. I agree with that. That was a good presentation.
I think everybody kind of sees the correlation.
Mm-hmm. Awesome.
Yeah, I would say the feedback we've received out of, I wasn't able to sit in all of the school improvement plans today. I think I maybe missed one. But the feedback from the admin, as they've been having the conversations with their staff, is that everybody now sees a connection. Everybody understands where we want to go and sort of how we want to try to get there. Now, teacher goals will be created to it. The admin have already received goals from feedback from last year in terms of where we're going to be going. It's all comes back and everybody has a clear understanding. And now we just need to take action on it.
Awesome. Anybody else? Mr. Gauss?
Are there short-term goals along the way also? Not just wait till the end of the year to see?
Yeah, no, there's absolutely. In each school improvement plan, one of the columns that they have to talk about for their, how they're, they write their goal, they write the objectives. And then there's different columns. What are the actions they're going to take, strategies, progress monitoring? And that is, how are they going to know what's happening? What check-ins are they using during the year? Whether it is, if it's an academic goal, they're using like the diagnostics that happen three times a year. They might be using something else. Is it attendance data? Are they, is it a goal where, like, if they're doing something with professional learning communities, are the minutes from those PLCs being submitted and looked at? Like, those, they all have, every goal has a way to monitor it throughout the year.
And do we have a way to react if it's not working out the way you expected?
Absolutely. Because it's, yes, they, yes, they would have to add different strategies in. And they get evaluated, too. So their goals are going to be aligned to their school improvement plan. So when they have their beginning-of-the-year meeting with their evaluator, they're going to talk about what their plan's going to be for the year. They have their mid-year meeting, just like teachers can. If things aren't going a certain way, we talk about how to adjust and get back on track for the rest of the year. And at the end of the year, and as Steve said, the district improvement plan isn't, is multi-year. So some of these, we had one principal come and say, this is, this is going to be a multi-year goal. We're starting this now, we're going to have to continue with this goal next year at the school. I know we are. But that's the conversation they're going to have at the end of the year with their evaluator. What are you putting in place for next year to keep that work moving forward? What's changing? So.
Okay, thank you.
Right, so what you put up as strategies is fluid. Because you're going to have learning challenges or pattern behavior that perhaps isn't going to.
Exactly.
Help in, in the plan. So you're going to, the document is fluid.
Exactly.
It's solid, but you're going to have to shift gears based on what you're seeing within the district.
Exactly.
That makes total sense to that point. Because you can't just say, all right, here it all, wait, it doesn't fit in here. Okay, sorry, I don't know what to do.
Well, that's exactly right.
I have faith that it's going to be fluid based on, like, feedback and different things you're going to be hearing from the school.
And it's going to be based on schools, too. Because, I mean, something might work for two out of three schools, but another school's got to try something totally different because of teacher ability or, or students. You don't, it depends on what, what population you're dealing with at the time.
And certainly.
It could be anything.
Right, and certainly, you know, where the K through 2s, the 3 through 5s.
Absolutely.
You see different things. And then, you know, the special programs that are in different schools. So, yeah, it's definitely going to be a challenge and adjusting here and there all throughout the process for many years to come, as Mr. Macchio says.
Exactly. It's true.
It's true.
Thank you.
Yep.
Awesome. Anybody else? Ms. Milton, thank you so much for coming this evening and.
You're very welcome.
Bringing us three stellar presentations. I cannot wait to see where we can go.
So I make a motion.
Now we need a motion to approve the 20, I don't know, what is exactly we're calling it? We're just calling it the Alliance Grant.
2025, 26 Alliance Grant.
So, okay, so I need a motion to.
Funding plan application.
Oh, okay. So I need a motion to approve the 2025, 26 Alliance Grant application.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. LeBlank, second by Ms. Pickett. Any discussion? Mr. Cobra?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Just a couple of quick comments and then a little question for us ponder at the end. So, you know, personally, I would have liked to kind of see the details of the plan, like, included with the agenda packet just for the sake of reviewing and having questions before the presentation and vote. I think that would have been a couple of steps towards general transparency. You know, I understand for, like, public presentation, executive level overview, but even just for the board, you know, if we had gotten maybe some more of this with the Friday update or the agenda packet, I think would have been great. That kind of has and kind of remains my stance for any board business that we're acting upon. I know we talked about the focus areas, the talent, academics, climate, and operations. So all priorities are acceptable and include RAS and L. And from what I've seen in the presentation, I think we hit that. There's one requirement, SMART goals are aligned with strategies and include measurable ESA, ESSA targets, which is Every Student Succeeds Act. We didn't see much of that, but based on our questions, that those are there. So I trust that those will be in the, in the final version. And then the CSDE application checklist also includes budget details are complete and acceptable. And going back to, as the superintendent said, I think we saw that when we were doing the budget earlier. So I know we've come full circle for that. So I just wanted to make those comments. But then one question, and this is really just for the board. Since we now have the Alliance Grant plan that we're acting upon with funds, how does this relate to the letter we sent back to the state governor and CSDE leadership dated June 26, 2024, where we asked to, quote, respectfully be removed from this designation? So just wanted to put that out there.
Can I respond to?
Yeah, go for it.
You have no ability as a Board of Education to remove yourselves from the Alliance Grant. That was clarified when we met with the Speaker of the House. It is a legislative authority. And so when we went and met with them, the only thing we really could do is try to get money to be sent to the district. So.
It was a nice.
And null and void, you guys wrote a wonderful letter that could do absolutely nothing.
It just felt really good to write a letter.
But voiced your opinion and shared your perspective, which is important.
We told them in the letter that we were getting nothing for it.
And now we're getting something for it, so there you go.
See, maybe it helps.
And we just had to ask the right person.
Exactly. Yep. Okay, anybody else? Ms. Pickett?
I just want to clarify about the process and, sorry, Andy. A, this grant, so I think about even approval process, Phil, and just want to just share a few things. One is, we discussed these positions through the budget process. And we were very clear on if we weren't going to get this money, that we were going to be funding it through the Alliance Grant. I think it's nice to now see how the goals are aligned to our district improvement plan. But we are designated an Alliance District because of our data. So we have to demonstrate growth in those areas or we continue to be here. I think the other thing to make, just make very clear here, is that this is a carve-out of ECS funding. So we would be really not smart to approve our own application to get money that, like, is ours.
I would like our money. I would vote for our money.
Okay. Mr. Longey, were you going to say something? Or you're just sitting there waiting?
He jumped ahead. I thought we were ready to shoot.
Okay, sorry.
I started talking about voting, so I just said that.
Okay, all right. All right, so anybody else?
Stay.
Roll call vote, please. Ms. Lawler?
Mr. Cobra?
Yes.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Cowan?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Gauss?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlank?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to superintendent's report now.
Okay, for the superintendent's report this evening, obviously, I, I'm going to keep it a little shorter because you just received the superintendent's report just through board guests, really. First thing, just in terms of student Board of Education reps. So we have identified the student Board of Education reps. They met and were interviewed at the high school. They've been selected. Mr. Longey and I have a meeting set up for 8:00 AM, bright and early, tomorrow, where we'll be meeting and debriefing with the kids and getting them sort of trained to become the student reps. So your student reps, and I believe Leslie did pass out a paper for you.
Yes.
Grade 12 Olivia Nucio, alternate Jennifer Vazquez Ramos, grade 11 Chase Menard, with an alternate being Avery LeLoup, I believe is how you say the last name. So again, we're going to meet with them tomorrow. We'll go through the training. And then, should you, right after this, decide to approve those student reps, we would have them attend the first meeting, which would be October 14th.
Thank you.
Second item is I had Mr. Longy pass out to you a budget calendar. And it's a front and back sheet because it is two very different calendars. While they both are related to the budget, the document shows you sort of the 26, 27 budget calendar, should we follow the typical pattern of the way everything would roll out? Whereas on the other side, you'll notice the one that says charter change. So as the charter was reviewed, there has been a suggestion or a recommendation that will go to the town referendum as part of that charter review committee, that this updated budget calendar is used. So I bring that up to you because there is a significant timeline impact here for the Board of Education. Now, we don't know which side of this paper will actually come to fruition. Because if the charter review does not pass, then we're following the same timeline. I cannot wait for the beginning of November to find out. That's, that puts me two months behind. So we will be following sort of our plan to follow the charter change. So I'm anticipating it to be passed, or at least that's the timeline that we are beginning to draw up and draft for the public schools. So rather than us having to have our budget completed and you approve it by the end of February, I'm really going to need you to approve it by the end of January. Really, it has to be downtown by February 5th on the list here. So, understanding that we usually only have a second Tuesday and fourth Tuesday of the month type of meeting, and I know I'm talking to half of you who will not be here for that, but for the new group that's coming on, you're going to get thrown right into budget process. Welcome to the Board of Education. Here comes a whole bunch of information. So it will be a month earlier. We have planned out, our administrative council's already been made aware that this whole process will be starting in another week. So we have Adco scheduled for next week. We'll do the budget overview. It seems like, well, we literally did just start school, but now we're talking budget already. So we're going to go with the budget overview for admin council. October 2nd, they'll receive all their budget sheets and they need to start rolling. Submission probably into our, my office in the business manager's office by the end of October. Tendatively looking at like Halloween. I think that's a Friday this year. And then we'll start doing all of our deliberations and our presentations to cabinet before Thanksgiving. I really sort of need to have this first draft, if you will, put together before Thanksgiving. Because then we have to just keep digging in and digging in and digging in. And I'd like to start presenting this to the new board, those of you who will be back and those who will be joining us, probably before Christmas. We have to do it that way. If, for whatever reason, the charter is not passed, I can put, you know, pump the brakes a little bit, but I just need to plan proactively in the event that it is going to pass. So again, this is a, it's a significant shift. I wanted to present it to you guys sort of in public because for those that are listening, they need to be made aware. And I'm not sure just how many people are aware of the, all of the different changes that are part of the charter. This one directly impacts us, so this was more than a Friday update that I needed to get to you.
Thank you.
Questions that I can answer regarding this?
Just a quick, because I'm just looking at it now, on the draft of the budget calendar, the very last date, it looks like a typo. It says
Yeah, it'd be the 26th.
Correct, yes.
It's not my document.
That's fine. I just want to make sure when we publish it that we're tracking.
I will be sure to share that with the town manager's office.
Andy, is that all, or do we have Mr. Longy?
We have one more item for superintendent's update. I just thought it would be because it ties in so nicely with the district improvement plan, the Portrait of a Learner, and our Alliance funding, that Mr. Longy has really taken on a lot of the restorative practices, planning and preparation and training that's going to be coming up. So I thought he could give you a quick little update related to that and the school climate law.
Great, thank you. So it's interesting, the restorative practice piece of it seems to be like the highlight of the show, but it's actually just one small part of the whole legislative change. So I'm going to kind of go through what we've been working on just in the past three weeks. So it's Public Act 23-167. That's a huge piece of legislation that was passed, and there's a lot in there. But the part we're going to focus on is school climate committees. So that law was very specific about every school in the state of Connecticut needs to have a school climate committee. And so that's what we've been working on. I personally met with most of them, and I just have two more to do next week. So they're all going to be seen by me. I'm starting off every single meeting. And during these meetings, I'm reviewing their responsibilities as a committee and showing them documents that I created to assist in their work. So I got very good using Microsoft Form. Got really good with that. So items that we're looking at, so really the task of these committees, this isn't a committee where you just sit around and talk. This is a doing committee. Like there's lots of things for them to do, which is wonderful. The first thing is they're creating evidence-based climate surveys. Then they're going to complete, I put together a pre-assessment on their buildings. I wanted them to fill out as a group regarding climate and culture. So they're going to go through the 15 different standards the state set for climate. It's a lot of standards, and they're going to pre-assess themselves before they even dig into any of this work. So I went over that with them. And also, we went over the actual, the plan itself. So they have a plan that they're going to put together. It's based off of 15 standards. They have to rate themselves in four different categories, whether they feel that they're just emerging or pre-emerging, emerging, they're maintaining what they're doing. So it's a lot of work that they need to do with that. Already committees are hard at work planning their next steps. But I really do see this work as year zero. I don't even see this as year one. I really do not. Committees are in the beginning phases of collecting data and creating plans. That's going to take several months to do. We'll see some, some implementation of strategies as the school year progresses. But this initial year is really the data gathering and development phase. So that's really the focus this year, is trying to give our committees as much structure and resources that we can possibly get them as they create this. So let's kind of look a little bit about what trauma-informed restorative is. So this Thursday actually is our first two-day set of restorative training. And it's got a trauma focused on it, and I think that's very important to understand that. Every single building is sending teams to be trained. And every building, those teams will be trained over six days until the beginning of December. So there's going to be two days of intense training. Then they're going to go back to their buildings and kind of ruminate on that, maybe start to implement some things themselves. And then they come back the next month and they get the next set of training. We've got our secondary school teams as one group, and then our elementary folks as another. And a lot of those team members are also on the climate committee. So they sometimes are the same, sometimes not always the same. But the climate committee and the restorative teams will work together as they start to develop plans because a lot of the plan is focused on restorative practices. So what is restorative practices? So it's a great question, right? So last year, when this law went to effect, I actually went to Steve and said, listen, I'm a dinosaur. I need to know what this is. I was of really the generation as an administrator where it was a suspension, call home, and I never thought twice about it. There was really no, what we would call, what I understand to be restorative now, there was no mending of any broken relationships. There was no opportunity to allow a student that really broke either the trust of the staff or did something that was so disruptive, there was no ability to get that student back in to try to restore the harm they caused. So there's a big piece of that on a, on a small level, on a whole school level, classroom level. So that's one piece of it. I actually went and did a two-day training up in Portland Main last year to really kept an open mind on it to see what it was, and I was the old guy in there. And I asked a million questions. So this means we can't suspend anymore? No. Does this mean that we let kids do whatever they want? No. So I have the same questions that probably you're thinking about. We're still issuing consequences to kids. That doesn't go away. It's just, are we able to prevent the vast majority of them? And I believe the answer is yes. I really do. And what sold me on it is when you look at training through a trauma-informed lens, the amount of brain research that we have gotten to within, within the science world about children's brains when they're going through trauma or anyone that's experienced trauma, what that does to the brain. And then when you're put into another stressful situation is absolutely eye-opening. The things as a teacher I used to yell at kids for was so out of their control. And I realize, I wonder how much harm I actually caused through that time. So listen, I've beaten my head against the wall many years. Some of you know me. Some of you have been your kids' principals. You know who I am. I'm ready to try something new. I just am. I'm ready not to go away from consequences, but how are we going to look at children and really develop mentally what they're doing, what they're processing? And Steve, you can cut me off at any time, but when I was younger, I thought trauma was like you saw someone get murdered. Like I thought that's what trauma was. Brain research, the littlest things that kids experience creates these indents within the brain that are traumatic that show itself in the strangest places. One thing we know, in 2025, more and more of our kids are walking through our doors that have experienced severe traumatic experiences. It's a different type of child to deal with. It is. So we're going to get trained on that. We're going to learn how to deal with that a little bit better. And a lot of it is preventative, and it's old-school things. That's what I liked about it. Consistency, organization, lack of clutter in rooms, staff being regulated themselves, coming into the environment in a more regulated manner, how we approach kids, how we speak to kids, how we deal with a kid that is literally blowing a classroom up. Okay? Those are all areas that we are going to get trained on. I don't have all the answers. I don't. So you can pepper me with a bunch of questions. I don't know all the brain science, but I heard it and I believe it. I don't know exactly what the end product is going to look like. But there are two schools in the state of Connecticut that for about five years have been doing trauma-informed restorative, and they are fully restorative practice school. Their discipline, and these aren't like Ivory Coast schools, these are schools just like the Enfield schools. They have almost zero suspensions, and their discipline referrals have dropped to almost insignificant numbers. So I hope you guys are willing to give this a shot, because if an old guy like me can do it, I'm hoping you guys can too. So that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Longy. Do you have anything else, Mr. Macia?
That is all.
Okay.
Madam Chair, not a question, but just a comment, something for, as Mr. Longy said, talking about these new practices, it might be worth for a future board meeting, having like the district climate committee maybe come and do a presentation and kind of speak more to this and kind of stuff that they've learned and takeaways, I think would be really useful.
That's, that's great, Mr. Coburn. I agree with that. And I would say by the late winter, spring, we're going to start to see these climate committee plans actually formalized. I'd love to start bringing some, some of those folks to you so you can see what they're working on. Maybe we can bring some of the restorative groups to come and talk about their experience. I think that would be an education for all of us. I agree. I think that's great.
I was just going to add that I, my guess too, is that this work is significantly part of some of our climate and culture goals in our district improvement plan and action steps. My other thing that I will just add is that this work is great, but it does take resources. So when I think about what we have budgeted, what you just shared in the Alliance Grant, not much of that staffing is going to like provide additional structures of support, especially with behavior. And I'm sure when we look at folks who are implementing this and implementing it well, a very intentional design of a behavior response system and who that staff is, their roles and responsibilities is clearly outlined, and we're pretty slim, unfortunately, in those areas. So just things for us to think about, that philosophy and all of that is great, but we also need the resources in order to make it be implemented.
Right. The districts that do it the best actually have invested in restorative coaches that actually work just on culture, and that's where you see your best results. So thanks for bringing that up.
This sounds great. Obviously, you don't need me to. I guess my only concern is, it's kind of closely related to what Amanda just said. There's only so much that a school can do. And you can have the most dedicated restorative practices team working on this. If the community isn't behind it, if there's no support for these kids who are really, really struggling, the most that you can do is, maybe I'm sounding too pessimistic, but you can temporize. You can try to keep the lid from, you know, from falling off. But in the final analysis, I think schools are going to have to rely in some measure. If they don't have the resources of their own, they have to rely on community resources to help provide those students with the assistance that they need. Because if you have a child who is really traumatized, all of the restorative practices in the world are not going to solve that child's problems. And sooner or later, a crisis is going to develop. So I know not too much you can do about that. But I just think we have to be clear-eyed about how much we can, we can expect restorative practices to work.
I just wanted to say that I appreciate your willingness to look into restorative practice because I think there is this myth, I think most on the board understand it, but our constituents on the town council have this general idea that kids are just misbehaved because they're not being parented well. And that's really not the case a lot of times. And we cannot, we did not go to school, we went to school in different times, we're all adults, but the trauma that the kids see now is way more than we could ever imagine at our ages. So I think identifying that as a reaction to what we are seeing in the behaviors is an important step for Enfield Public Schools. I too am concerned that we just don't have, you know, I would, you guys need additional support for this. So in my opinion, I hope we get a town council that understands that, and it's something you can start budgeting for. I have no doubt that you're going to be able to do it. I just think that it would be helpful if you guys had more supports for it and could invest more time or more supports into that. But I really appreciate you saying that because I think there is just such a lack of understanding about the trauma that the kids go through and how it has a lasting impact. And although, like Dr. Jerry said, there's so much we can do in a day, but we need that community support, which we feel that there's a lack of. But if for six and a half hours a day, we can make a child feel they're in a safe space, then we're doing a good job because we want them to feel safe and comfortable in school. So I appreciate this. Let me know when you're going to present on it again because I'll tune in because I'm excited to see how this goes. So, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Yeah, Ms. Akri.
Thank you, Andy, for that presentation. Like Tina, I really appreciate learning that this is coming into the school. This is their professional development, part of their professional development. Now, I know Dr. Cowan is the expert, but I do feel that this is a start. You know, I know everybody's concerned about not having enough resources and so on, but I still think this is a great start. It's more than what we have.
Mr. Gauss?
Thank you for explaining it. I appreciate that. And you know that I, my son was one of your students. I'm really encouraged by how much you say you don't know because it's way more important to want to, to learn about it. But one of the other questions I have is when you're talking about teachers coming in to the room and being more regulated and stuff like that, will there be a component of this available for parents to learn what's being done in the school so that they can work along with that and they're helping to regulate themselves too?
I was just going to ask that too.
Well, I'm going to write that down.
I was just going to ask that too.
I think that is an incredible suggestion. So Thursday, I meet with the trainer, and let me bring that up. Maybe that is a piece of the training with it. I think that's a great idea.
You know, maybe it will help with consistency and some community conversations to, to keep everybody on the same page.
Anybody else? Okay, yeah, because Dean took my questions, so we're good. Okay, so, moving on to audiences. We have any this evening?
Yes.
Okay. Maureen Griffin?
You're about to find out. Okay. Maureen Griffin, Abbey Road, Mom. I was late because I was at a Safe Grad meeting. Just putting this out there. Due to scheduling conflicts, Jingle Jam will not be the first Saturday. It's going to be the first Friday. So put it, save that date. Of December, yes, I was about to say the exact date. Friday, December 5th is Jingle Jam. So I hope everyone will come and help support providing our seniors with a safe, healthy celebration for their graduation overnight, so they can have a lot of fun and we can feed them the next morning when they're... It's an interesting thing to watch. So many thoughts. So many thoughts. The restorative training, I hope it's not just for the professional staff in the buildings. I think every person that interacts with the children, no matter what their role, really needs to have some training on regulating themselves and being able to, as you say, presenting yourself with the child in a regulated way yourself so that you can co-regulate with the child. Trauma-informed is very important. I hope that people understand that trauma is not, as you say, seeing someone killed. It's not just seeing your dad beat your mom up. It's not just those type of things. Trauma for a small child is not knowing if they're eating when they get home. Trauma for a small child is just not knowing what is coming next and having so much of their life be up in the air. These are things that a community can help to address. These are things that we can fund a warming center. We can better support our food pantry. We can better support our soup kitchen. We can provide aftercare for our children. We can provide training for our families. Kids are traumatized because our society is so fragmented. It's not going to get better until we get our acts together as adults. And it's also important for people to understand that not every child responds to difficulties in the same way. Some have a lot more support, even if it's not having the financial means. Some people, some children have more family behind them, and that makes a huge difference. But you know what? You don't know that when you are interacting with that child. So, you need to approach every child with a lack of judgment of where they're coming from. Meet them where they are. Don't think that they just need their butt spanked. And the other thought, so many different things running through my mind. You talked about understanding all the Alliance things and all the changes and the regulations and the legislation that's coming down. It's very important that the people sitting up on that dais there understand education, understand the regulations, understand what it is like in the buildings now, not 10 years ago, not 15 years ago, not 30 years ago. It's completely different, and we need people up there advocating for our kids who understand who they are and what they need. Thank you.
Thanks, Maureen. Okay. Next up, board member comments. Who would like to go first? Mr. Coburn?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, while it was mentioned at our last meeting, I just wanted to reiterate that the month of September is National Suicide Prevention Month, a time dedicated to raising awareness, promoting resources, and sharing hope. As everyone learns the number 911 at an early age, it is also important to share another important phone number with anyone that may need it, 988, the National Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. This is also a time to remind one another that nobody fights alone. Together, we can break the stigma, undiscussing and utilizing available mental health and wellness resources and supporting our peers. It's hard to believe October is right around the corner, which will bring about focus to other causes and themes, such as National Fire Prevention Month, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and also, more specific to us, National Principals Month, which recognizes all the elementary and secondary school principals who dedicate their knowledge and abilities all year long. Additionally, prior to our next meeting of this board, on Thursday, October 2nd, it will be National Custodian Day, an annual day dedicated to recognizing the vital contributions of custodians and custodial workers who ensure our school buildings and classrooms remain clean, safe, and maintained. As at the beginning of this meeting, I brought up a specific community loss during our moment of silence. I wanted to further highlight another recent tragedy at the national level. On September 10th, activist incumbentor Charlie Kirk was assassinated at the age of 31 before a crowd in broad daylight while on a university campus in the state of Utah. Regardless of personalities and motivations, we must all stand together against this kind of political violence in our country. We must pray for Charlie's family, his wife Erica, and their two young children. Collectively, we must remain empathetic in situations such as these, incognizant of inappropriate comments and social media posts that have been surfacing and shared in the days since. Beyond abiding by policies in place at various organizations, including one we have here, such as BOE Policy 4118.51 regarding social networking, we must always strive to maintain civil discourse and decency, whether online and offline. And we must all value human life. Inappropriate, tasteless, and out-of-line comments run counter to our values as a board, as a community, and as a country. Moreover, violations of these standards should be promptly condemned, investigated, and result in proper disciplinary action. I would be remiss if I also failed to mention the passing of another local resident, longtime Patch editor and high school sports icon, Tim Jensen, at the age of 59, who passed away peacefully over a week ago now. He had dedicated many years to journalism. He was expressly passionate about high school sports. He was a standout cross-country runner, and he enjoyed golf, both as a player and a spectator. He also supported wrestling, interviewing WWE stars, and promoting a local independent wrestling company here in Enfield. He was a 1983 graduate of the now-closed Enrico Fermi High School, as well as Nuntuck Community College. His impact was significant, and he will be dearly missed. On the theme of my remarks this evening, I'll conclude with my customary quote. "When you arise in the morning, think of what a privilege it is to be alive, to think, to enjoy, and to love," by Marcus Aurelius, Roman Emperor.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes, I have just a few brief comments tonight. We got a press release from Enfield High School that Maria Griffin and Bridget Kelly have been named commended students in the 2026 National Merit Scholarship Program. About 34,000 commended students throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Those being named commended students have demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success. So, congratulations to them and their families. Mr. Macio, I appreciate the update on the charter, because some of the candidates, their main concern is, what do I need to know about the budget? So, we'll be like, you're going to hit the ground running if you get elected. And that's why the budget process is looking different this year. I think it's important for everyone to know, because then, all of a sudden, there's going to be Facebook posts that say, "We can't order anything because there's budget cuts." But no, it's, I appreciate you putting that information out there. I would also like to take a moment to send my condolences and sympathies to Tim Jensen's family. It was a passing that was shocking to us. Tim Jensen is a longtime friend of both my family and my husband's family, and he will leave a lasting legacy. Every year, on Father's Day, the Patch would publish a letter he wrote to his father after his father passed. So, I hope, in honor of that, they keep posting that. I would also like to send my sincere sympathies, condolences, and prayers to the family of Jamie Nickerson. Like Phil had said before, I didn't know them well, but based on the people that were closest to him, he made a huge impact on those people's lives, and I am very, very sorry for your loss, and I pray for you daily. And that's all I have this evening.
All right. Anybody else like to go? Oh, Ms. Pickett?
All right. I will start by recognizing it is Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th to October 15th. This is a time to recognize and celebrate the many contributions, cultures, traditions of Hispanic and Latino Americans. I think at a time like now, it's really, really important that we take the time to uplift diversity, strengthen unity, and recognize how culture shapes who we are and makes us better. Also, a good year to everybody celebrating Rosh Hashanah. It's a time of reflection and renewal for school staff, also just thinking that there might be students who are directly impacted right now, so thinking about some of our classroom practices. I do want to provide, actually, I'm going to hold off on that one. I want to let folks know there will, I'm not sure what we're going to be able to provide as a public update for some of the security questions that I have been asking, but I know things have been working on there. I've also reached out to our town council, our mayor in particular, regarding the sidewalks and paths at some of our schools. My children are walkers, and our back path, that actually makes it a walkable path, like distance to school, is horrific. I was told that these are being assessed by DPW. I think this is part of a larger conversation about the maintenance and upkeep of our buildings and some of our planning regarding our K-5 schools, but just some considerations there. I also wanted to circle back to the budget calendar change. More as a parent, I'm concerned about this potential budget charter change of the budget referendum being included in the charter. I just, as a parent, concerned that typically, families and residents don't show up to vote in local elections, let alone show up to vote in special referendums. So, just really worried about that potential impact on ensuring that our schools get adequately resourced. I also want to circle back to that restorative practices conversation that we were having. I think the reality is that there's some really concerning behaviors happening in our buildings, and it's not just Enfield, so I don't want us to feel like we're alone in this. As a board member, we're notified of protective custody 911 calls. As a mom, my children come home and tell me about situations that happen. As a friend, I get the texts from friends that say, "Hey, this happened, and this is really concerning." I can only speak about my own personal parent experience. At my child's school, there's one school counselor that's servicing all students, servicing students of 504s and IAPs, and we have specialized programs with students with autism and particularly behavioral needs in our school. And that's one person's job. So, I think circling back to that, it takes resources. It really does. And when I think of some of the situations that I hear about, and even when we think about our class sizes are more manageable, when there's 24 kids in a room and two kiddos are having a physical altercation, there's only so much one adult can do in that space. And when the only person you're calling is also responsible for all the other children and servicing kids proactively, because their job is to also meet IAP goals and objectives and support students proactively, I just think we need to be real about some of the concerns that are happening and the need for consistent school social workers, behavior techs, classroom instructional assistants. Like, it won't get better unless we resource it. Safe Grad, thank you for mentioning those updates, Maureen. I saw some students at Rafia Plaza this weekend, working hard to raise some money. So, I appreciate that. I'm going to give a moment to make some updates from the curriculum committee, if that's okay, Jean. Typically, we just do some quick updates at the end. Is that okay if I just?
No, I haven't.
You got a long one? Beautiful. Then I am going to cut my comments here and allow the curriculum chair to handle that. I've just been getting a flurry of questions and wonders, so I just want to make sure all that information is clearly outlined. With that being said, I thank those that continue to come out and stay engaged and remind folks that it's important. Thanks.
Anybody else like to go? Okay. Janet raising her hand. So, I'm just going to have a couple of things. It's definitely been a rough couple of weeks for Enfield. There's been too many. One death is too many, but this has been a lot. So, I just want to extend my sympathies to the families. And then, in addition to that, I would just ask our community to be kind to each other. You never know what somebody's going through, and, you know, maybe try to pass on and act of kindness a day to a stranger. Even if it's something as insignificant as letting somebody merge onto the highway, or holding a door for them, or waving at somebody, you know, in your neighborhood. It can go a long way to make somebody's day go from bad to not so bad. I also have a ton of concerns about the charter change with the budget, and I'll say it for the next chairperson, whoever sits here, that this is a pretty raw deal that we're getting on the Board of Ed, because we already have so many assumptions that have to go into that budget, and to move it up another month is just, makes those assumptions that much more difficult to even fathom. And then, on top of that, when you have an election year and you're changing, you know, the structure of a board, and in this case, there's a lot of people, like, three-quarters of that budget's going to be ready to go, and then a whole new set of eyes is going to be on it. It's just, it's, it feels like we're setting it up for disaster, even though I understand why the date moved, because they wanted to put the referendum in for the 5%. But it is just a very, it's going to be a tough situation. So, I do not, I do not favor whoever has to do with that next, but, hey, man, you can call me, I guess. I'll be on standby. I'll sit in the audience, especially when you have the trauma-informed presentation. I definitely want to listen to that, because I've had a ton of questions about that, and I don't understand it myself. So, it'd be really cool to learn more about that. Then the last thing I wanted to say tonight is Buzz Robotics. They are reviving the tradition of the STEAM Family Night at the high school. So, on November 5th, everybody's welcome. There is no charge. It's from 5:30 to 8 o'clock. It's on the first floor of Enfield High. I don't know which door you're going to go in yet, because they're still working on that, but they're going to have STEAM activities, mostly for ages K through 6, but obviously, younger and older are welcome to come. So, that should be great to see back in action again. And that was all I had.
So, November 5th?
November 5th, 5:30 at Enfield High.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. So, anybody else? No? Okay. Unfinished business, we don't have any. New business is 11B. I need a motion to appoint the 2025, 2026 student representatives, Olivia Nusheh and Chase Menard, and the alternates Jennifer Vasquez Ramos and Avery LeLoo, as our student reps.
So moved.
All right. So, Mr. Gauss, you haven't moved things in a while. So, motion made by Mr. Gauss.
Seconded.
And seconded by Mr. Ryder. I need discussion. No? Okay.
I'm so excited for student reps to be back. Sorry. Very excited for student reps to be back. And Steve, I'm not sure, kind of, I know last year, they got a training, and I just said, whatever you did last year to prepare the students to be part of our team, great job, and I hope that continues. They were valuable members, not only in their student updates, but part of discussion, and I think that's such a valuable perspective for us to bring in. And then, we do the decision-making part of the voting, but I think their voice in our discussion is really helpful.
Anybody else?
I'm not willing to take all the credit for that. Mr. Longy is there as well.
Awesome. All right. So, roll call, please.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Callen?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Gauss?
Yes.
Ms. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman, right.
Yes. Okay. Moving on to board committee reports. Ms. Akri, curriculum. You have a lot written down there.
Our last curriculum meeting was held on September 15th in Ms. Middleton's office. Mr. Ponte, the STEAM director, did a presentation of an Enfield High School course, Proposals and Changes. The first course that was being proposed is an addition to the Enfield High School Program of Studies, and it's called Algebraic Foundations. This is a one-credit course that could be taken before Algebra 1. The benefit of this course is to help students build foundational skills and confidence in mathematics. This one credit from this course would be used towards a student's four credits for the math graduation requirement. This course was approved by the Curriculum Board Committee. The second course Mr. Ponte proposed was AP Pre-Calculus. He explained that the curriculum for our Honors Pre-Calculus is a very close match to the AP Pre-Cal calculus course. It makes sense to replace the Honors course with the AP course to give students the opportunity to gain college credit. Also approved by the Board Committee, the final course that Mr. Ponte proposed was an AP Anatomy and Physiology course. Our Honors Anatomy and Physiology curriculum is similar to the AP course. This change would also give the students another opportunity to gain college credit. That course was also approved by our Curriculum Board. Our second guest was Mr. Joel Sanez. He explained that our grade 7th and 8th grade French teacher at JFK resigned before the start of school.
start of school. The position has been posted, but did not get any candidates with a French background. Therefore, the district has contracted Elevate K-12, and students will be in a virtual classroom setting, which there will be a live virtual teacher planning and facilitating lessons. Also, this teacher will be doing the grading of work and entering the students' grades into Power School. This teacher will also engage with parents through Parent Square, and there will be opportunities for virtual meetings. There will be a teacher in the classroom who will support the students with managing the online platform. It was also mentioned that there is a long-term absence in Spanish at the high school. This teacher's absence is scheduled to conclude at the end of October. Mr. Sanez is using edgenuity for curriculum to create units for the students. The next curriculum meeting is scheduled for October 23rd.
Thank you, Mrs. Akri. Ms. Pickett, I think she, she definitely.
I just appreciate that because I have been getting questions about the JFK French and the high school Spanish. And I think there's like, you know, when people hear from somebody else, and they hear from somebody else, I think it's just helpful to get the information out clearly. So thank you.
Dr. Kalman?
Well, just a question, a clarity. The, there is no, the Spanish teacher that was scheduled to take care of the course is not currently available, correct? And so I just didn't catch what you mean, what you were talking about in terms of how that situation is being handled. Is that being handled by?
It's a learning platform. It's a good course. So they're going to, students are going to take lessons in that with a building sub until that instructor is back.
Is that online?
Yeah, it's like an online learning program.
Just not the virtual teacher part.
The high school is not getting the virtual teacher.
Yep. That's for French. The virtual teacher is, yeah. Right. But that teacher will be back in October?
Yes.
For Spanish at the high school?
Yep.
Okay. Good. All right. Finance and Budget Committee. Mr. Coburn?
Thank you, Benham Chair. So real brief update tonight, there's not been a meeting of the Finance and Budget Subcommittee. Our next scheduled meeting is Monday, October 6th at 5:00 p.m. The only probably significant things to talk about are the budget development calendar, which was mentioned during the superintendent's report. That's all I have.
Mrs. Cushman, Policy Committee.
The Policy Committee has not met yet. This year, we will be meeting next week, September 30th at 5:30.
And Leadership Committee, our next meeting is October 8th, Wednesday. All right. Liaison reports, school reports and updates. Who'd like to go? Mr. Coburn?
Thank you, Benham Chair. So I'll do my usual shout-out to the Henry Barnard friends and family. Last week, Henry Barnard held their Fall Open House. I was able to attend and drop into several classrooms and say hi to various families and staff. Turnout was amazing, and I'm pleased to see so many parents and guardians engaging with their educators, as well as other support staff and partner organizations that were present, such as the PTO, ERFC, and Scouts. Also, last week, students at Henry Barnard had their school picture day. Photos are available via Shutterfly Life Tuts LLC. Parents that had previously bought photos should be, have already received emails. Those that haven't will be getting a little take-home flyer. Make-up Day is scheduled for the morning of Wednesday, October 29th, for any students that were not present for their photos. Keep an eye out for your weekly Big Cat Courier newsletter, which is normally published on Fridays for all your other school-specific updates. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Anybody else? Mr. Ryder?
So I have an update on a couple of dates for Eli Whitney. So tonight was their September PTO meeting. If you were not able to attend, or you'd like to learn more about the Eli Whitney School PTO, please email ewpto@yahoo.com. That's E-W for Eli Whitney, pto@yahoo.com. October 10th, everybody in Enfield Public Schools will be participating in a Pinkout for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I'm mentioning that now because we won't meet again until October 14th as a group. Also, there is no school on October 13th and October 14th. Again, those are occurring before we next meet, so I wanted to mention that as well. And then also, at Eli Whitney, their Fall Picture Day has been scheduled. It'll be October 23rd. That's it for the Whitney Wolves update.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Anybody else like to go? Mrs. Akri?
From Crando and Mr. Dupere. On Thursday, Megan Dowd Lambert will be joining us for a parent workshop. She will be speaking to parents about how to ask critical questions when reading to your children. That event, I plan on attending, so that should be interesting. For Crando, Picture Day will be on Wednesday, October 1st. Remind your child to bring their smiles. And he ends with the same thing Mr. Ryder discussed. On Friday, October 10th, Enfield Public Schools will hold the annual Pinkout Day. So students and staff are encouraged to wear pink and bring an optional donation to support breast cancer awareness.
Thank you, Mrs. Akri. Anybody else? Mr. Gauss?
Hi. Calling. Sorry, calling out for JFK. They recently had a Hat Day where they raised $825 for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, which is awesome, being a survivor myself. And they have also completed grade-level expectation assemblies, kind of giving the kids an idea of what's expected of them. And I would say, please check Power School to see more details on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Joint Facilities.
Joint Facilities next meets October 9th at 6:00 p.m.
Okay. Joint Insurance? We don't have anything on the schedule. Joint Security?
Our next meeting is October 10th at 9:30.
Enfield Mental Health Committee.
Dr. Kalman, Mr. Longy, and I met on September 16th. We worked on our final report that we will present to the board at the October 14th Board Meeting. We are looking forward to sharing the work and accomplishments that happened during this last term.
Looking forward to that. And Pre-Rath Committee.
We're supposed to meet tomorrow night, but we did get an email from a town counselor that they're unable to make it too, so.
Oh, we might not have a quorum.
I don't think we're going to have a quorum, so we may not be meeting. Plus, we, some of us will be in a different meeting, a lot of us here, so I don't think that we'll be able to have the meeting.
Okay. All right. Anybody have anything else? Nope? Okay. So approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the regular Board of Ed meeting minutes from September 9th, 2025.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Coburn, seconded by Mr. Gauss. Any discussion? Okay, can I have a show of hands to approve? We've got nine in favor and none against. Okay. All right. We don't have any approval of accounts in peril, right, Mr. Coburn?
Correct. No items for this meeting.
Okay. And, Mr. Ryder, do we have any correspondence or board communications?
Nothing that was not included in our packet.
Okay. So, we have executive session this evening for matters related to collective bargaining. So we're going to go into executive session. No votes will occur in there, and no votes are needed when we come out, so we are going to end your broadcast this evening now. So I need a motion to go into executive session. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Pickett, seconded by Mr. Gauss. All in favor? Show of hands. Nine in favor, none against. Thank you, and have a good evening.